Accountability. This is a very common theme these days in the media. And it's really no surprise as we kind of enter this age of transparency. This was also the main theme of our efforts at the city council meeting here as we oppose the 5G rollout and the inaction of our local municipality and our local city council members. Basically, what we're doing is we're pushing to have these city council members and the city manager held personally liable and personally accountable for their inactivity in protecting the citizens and the people of this community. The reason that I'm putting together this edit and sharing these stories here is to help inspire you to make similar efforts or help you if you're already involved in efforts against 5G in your area or also inspire you to come join us if you're local. And you know, there's power in numbers. So come join us. And I can also help share some of the written documentation. Follow any of the links in the description of this video or any of the videos on my channel and join my list and you'll have direct email correspondence with me and you can ask me for any of the documents and I can help share that with you. Here is what went down at the city council last night.
I came here today to talk about the 5G problem. I have one five feet from my driveway. So I've recently found out since the last time I was here that AT&amp;T doesn't even have a contract with the city. So AT&amp;T is able to proliferate these health hazards on not just major collectors, major arterials in commercial and industrial areas, but in local neighborhoods. I live on a place. It's a partial dead end street across the street from a grade school. And AT&amp;T can come at will. They send out their subcontractor Mastech. You never know when they're coming. They've damaged the end school, the speeds, the school zone sign that's adjacent to the new eWeb pole that was installed. The new eWeb pole is, doesn't resemble the pole that was removed. The pole that was removed was 25 feet. The new eWeb pole is 50 feet. So they come up and they just show up at any time and you don't know what they're doing. And they're, they get angry if you're taking pictures of them and we remind them they're in the public right of way, which you know, you've told us is they are. And so I'm here to ask you to ask AT&amp;T as other cities have done and AT has, AT&amp;T has agreed to take a time out so we can have a community process so we can talk about citing decisions. Instead of them going just anywhere, they can be cited appropriately, not by schools, playgrounds, parks. You spent all this money to upgrade tugman and then you let the city, let this pole be put right smack in the middle of the length of the park facing the playground. It just doesn't make sense. Thank you.
Colin Farnsworth, Ward 3. And just, our city's becoming a colony of the corporate state and you guys inaction on this 5G rollout, which is untested, very dangerous. You guys are becoming the pawns of this corporate state. And I know none of you guys wanted to be representatives to do that. And so we are here regularly to tell you, show you the evidence, show you the legal facts behind what y'all need to do. And we're getting more serious by the month. The Eugene City Council's behavior is bound by the very high and strict standards of the fiduciary and trust law. They cannot even act unreasonably without violating their trustees duties. They have the duty of care, loyalty, impartiality, accountability, and the duty to preserve the public trust. You all have certainly violated some of these duties in your handling of the issues of the 5G cell towers and the antennas being installed all around Eugene. These antennas will be in front of homes, schools, hospitals, playgrounds. You have violated the public trust by permitting the untested and potentially hazardous installations of these cell towers. You have chosen money and the fear of being sued by telecom companies over the well-being and safety of the people of Eugene. You have violated quite a few laws while pursuing your 5G cell tower policies. And these are just a few examples. You have discontinued, discounted the testimony and evidence of people diagnosed with suffering from electromagnetic sensitivity, you who will be assaulted by the harmful 5G radiation for 24 hours a day. Thank you.
Abraham Laquornick, domicile southwest Eugene. You have violated the Oregon Constitution, your oath of office, and the natural rights of the people by not passing a moratorium halting small cell towers and 5G when instructed to do so by the People's Panel of over 270 members of Families for Safe Technology. You will remain in violation until you pass a moratorium. You have allowed the city attorney to violate the public records law when she twice refused to provide requested emails under her false claim of confidentiality without being reprimanded for doing so. This false claim of confidentiality or attorney-client privilege, if unchecked, could be used to withhold future public records from those unaware of the law. The mayor or her staff unreasonably have not responded to repeated requests for a meeting with the mayor in over a month until just recently, when requested once again. Not something a trustee does. Mike Clark, unreasonably, has not responded to an email asking him to explain what he meant by saying that some of the statements that Families for Safe Technology made at a recent city council meeting were erroneous and wrong. Mike Clark, at the end of this meeting, you are required to explain your allegations or retract them. Silence from a trustee when there is a legal or moral duty to speak is considered fraud in the law because of the likelihood of deception. You have been silent long enough.
Becky Bruckner here. For eight months, our group, Families for Safe Technology, has been providing the council with solid, peer-reviewed, scientific research, testimony from doctors and PhDs, attorneys, letters, and legal research from our own legal researcher on the dangers of VMFs and 5G. We have read and hand-delivered all of these papers to the city manager and council. It has taken a great deal of time, effort, and money spent to do this job over eight months. I know because I did a lot of it. I want to know what happens to these papers. Do you read them? Do you talk together amongst yourselves about what has been presented to you? Where do these papers go? Clearly, the installation of, in Eugene, of 5G is a risk for public health and safety. The council, nor the FCC, nor the FDA, has offered any proof that it is safe. No safety testing has been done. On February 7th, 2019, Senator Blumenthal blasts the FCC and the FDA at a Senate Commerce hearing for doing no research on 5G. April 15th, 2019, Peter DeFrazio wrote to Chairman of the FCC, Ajay Pai, asking for reports on safety testing for 5G as there are no studies. I repeat, there's no studies, no safety testing. How could the council, in good conscience, have proceeded with the installation of 5G in Eugene after all of these copious warnings from Eugene's public at every council meeting for the last eight months? There are red flags everywhere. Why did you do this? Are you prioritizing money over our health and safety? What are you thinking? You never speak to us. We want answers now. Saying that your hands are tied because of the FCC, it's not true. And we've proved that to you.
This is continuing the statement of Becky. I live South Hills, Ward 4, top of Lorraine. We want to know, what are you going to do at the work session on October 9th? We want a public hearing where we talk to you, ask questions, and you answer our questions. We want a halt to 5G in Eugene until it can be proven safe by third-party, peer-reviewed scientists, not industry-funded scientists. We have been shut out from this process. You have kept us in the dark. You have given us no notice, no public hearing. That is what is required. We are demanding that you halt the project and start over and reform your process so citizens are given an opportunity for meaningful contribution to the public debate. We were never asked. This was all done in secret, starting in 2014. Many cities across the U.S. have done emergency ordinances. Why have you not done this? Some cities have even done moratoriums and then built strong ordinances for protection from telecom invasions. We need answers from you now instead of, "Thank you, your time is up." This is unacceptable and won't be tolerated anymore. Follow the example of Brussels, Belgium. Get up and stand up and do something. Don't just sit there and allow us to be radiated. This radiation is as dangerous as uranium radiation. It is absolutely deadly. Read what has happened in Geneva just this week when it went in, in secret. Thank you.
Sabrina, I'm in Allen's Ward. And I wanted to speak this to empower the council and, and tell you that you are misguided by the city attorney here on the anti-commandeering issue. This amicus brief was filed by 53 U.S. senators, 53 U.S. senators in support of an appeal to the Supreme Court in the case of Citizens for the Appropriate Placement of Telecommunications Facilities versus FCC. The following is the testimony of those senators, right? 53 senators, these words. Section 704 of the Telecommunications Act of 1996 and implementing federal communications, communications regulations are unconstitutional under the 10th Amendment in that they commandeer state and local zoning authorities to approve or disapprove building permits under specific federal mandates. State and local zoning authorities, under principles articulated in New York versus United States by this honorable court, may not have their processes commandeered to implement a federal policy issued by the Federal Communications Commission, which seeks to override local control over health, safety, and local land use issues regarding the citing of personal wireless services facilities such as cell phone towers by compelling an outcome determined by the Congress, the mandatory issuance or non-issuance of local construction permits if certain federal conditions are met. The authority of the Federal Communications Commission to commandeer the actions of local zoning authorities and mandate that they issue or not issue building permits precludes such local authorities from exercising power regarding health, safety, and local land issues and is not consistent with the 10th Amendment of the United States Constitution.
And this is a continuation of what Sabrina was reading, the same set of comments from these senators. This case is thus a challenge to the constitutionality of Section 704 of the Telecommunications Act of 1996 and to the implementing regulations of the Federal Communications Commission. Section 704 of the Telecommunications Act of 1996 is an attempt to compel state or local zoning officials to address the alleged public policy problems as determined by the Congress and Federal Communications Commission regarding the shortage of personal wireless service facilities, even when granting building permits for additional personal wireless service facilities in some circumstances would be inconsistent with state decisions designed to protect the health and safety of local residents. In general, we urge that this issue is of great importance because of the dramatic increase in the citing, construction, and use of telecommunications and radio towers in communities throughout the United States. The location of such towers near homes, schools, farms, churches, hospitals, airports, highways, and the whole host of work and home environment is of great importance to the state, to local government, and citizens. There is significant concern by homeowners living near potential tower sites regarding financial harm they would suffer from reductions in the value of their property if the towers were to be built. In addition, there is growing public and scientific concern over the adverse effects of radio frequency emissions emanating from cell phone, cellular phone facilities. Also, it is our understanding that while the FCC has established standards for the thermal effects from such radiation, the FCC has not issued emission standards based on non-thermal biological effects at below hearing levels, which may cause biological harm.
Legal notice of failure to protect fundamental rights of health, safety, security, and privacy by acts of ultra virus. Notice to agent is notice to principle. Notice to principle is notice to agent. For many months, members of Families for Safe Meters and others have repeatedly presented you with credible evidence and warnings about the potential health, safety, security, and privacy problems created by the planned massive deployment of untested 5G and smart meter technology. You have knowingly and willingly chose, chosen to act ultra virus by not giving proper credence to these exhortations and by continuing to allow these potentially dangerous technologies to continue to be deployed in our community. Your decisions to allow 5G and smart meters to be deployed in our community were made, quote, "beyond your power," end quote, to make and are therefore a violation of law. This is considered to be an act of ultra virus. And if judged to be so under judicial review, would result in a loss of your immunity as an officer of the Eugene City Council. This would make you vulnerable in your private capacity to civil litigation and criminal prosecution for official misconduct. Under the doctrine of ultra virus, all of your actions, decisions, and contracts in this matter would then become null and void. You have neglected your duty as a trustee of the people and as an officer of the city, of the Eugene City Council to act in good faith and to, and with care to protect the health, safety, security, and privacy of the people of Eugene.
You have abused your discretion and acted unconscionably, beyond your powers, in the following ways. You have failed to provide the community with the alleged evidence of the safety of 5G and smart meters before giving out permits for the installation of small cell towers and allowing the deployment of smart meters. You were made aware at the time of the considerable scientific, peer-reviewed evidence that electromagnetic fields, EMF, often abbreviated that way for electromagnetic fields, and their various forms can be extremely unhealthy for people and the environment. You were also made aware of the numerous other disadvantages of 5G and smart meters and the entire advanced meter infrastructure, often abbreviated AMI system. You have failed to do your due diligence to make a concerted effort to thoroughly research in a timely manner the serious allegations that you were alerted to about the various potential harm caused by 5G and smart meters, including the harmful effects of millimeter and microwave EMF radiation, particularly on pregnant women, young children, and the elderly and highly sensitive individuals.
You have failed to notify the community with the, about the highly credible expert testimonies and studies which were provided to you as evidence of potential dangers of 5G and smart meters, dangers which could possibly lead to major health, safety, security, and/or privacy crisis. You have failed to make any public announcements, publish any information on the city's website, or hold a town hall meeting as requested on this issue as any reasonable prudent person would do under these circumstances. This is a violation of the people's right to know. You have kept the people you claim to serve out of the loop of decision-making on this vital issue, which would have allowed them to do their own research and come to their own conclusions. You have failed to take action to prevent harm to the environment and all living beings by continuing to allow the installation of 5G small cell antennas and the advanced meter infrastructure that produce potential harmful effects from pulsed millimeter and microwaves in the environment, adding to the already vast amounts of electrosmog from many other wireless devices. You have failed to safeguard the people you claim to serve from possible serious financial loss due to the potential risk of the city of massive litigation from harm caused by 5G, smart meters, and EMF. Your awareness of potential dangers of 5G and smart meters and your substantial inaction make you personally liable for civil suits as well. You have failed to uphold the constitutionally protected Fourth Amendment rights of privacy and no search and seizure without warrant by allowing the installation of vital, of a vital part of surveillance system infrastructure, which will eventually have the capability to monitor and record detailed activities in private homes and businesses. You have failed to do your duty to protect the rights of the community. The lack of credibility and certification of the independent testing of 5G and AMI, therefore, has left us being unsafe and makes this akin to indiscriminate mass public experimentation forbidden in the Nuremberg Code.
Thank you.
And I'm just continuing on. In order to correct your ultra virus acts and the above unconscionable failures of duty, you are morally, ethically, and legally required to now apply the precautionary principle, which should have been implemented initially. One of the definitions of the precautionary principle is the introduction of a new product or process whose ultimate effects are disputed or unknown should be resisted, or more simply put, better safe than sorry. Implementing this principle would then authorize you to prudently put a stop to the placement of 5G cell antennas and the deployment of smart meters, or at a minimum, to put a moratorium on the installation until the allegations of harm presented to you can be thoroughly investigated and reported to the community at large. The definition of ultra virus from Wikipedia. Ultra virus is a Latin phrase for beyond the powers. The ultra virus doctrine typically applies to a corporate body such as a limited company, a government department, or a local council, so that any act done by the body which is beyond its capacity to act will be considered void. Administrative law, definition. In administrative law, an act may be judicially reviewable ultra virus in a narrow or broad sense. The narrow ultra virus applies if an administrator did not have the substantive power to make a decision or it was wrought with procedural defects. Broad ultra virus applies if there is an abuse of power, for example, unreasonableness or bad faith, or failure to exercise an administrative discretion, for example, acting at the behest of another or unlawfully applying a government policy. We would like you all to respond to this tonight, all of these things that we have been talking about. And on another point, since I still have time, Berkeley, California just passed a law prohibiting natural gas infrastructure in new low-rise residence buildings, starting January 1st, 2020. If Berkeley can do it, Eugene can do it too. The city will include commercial buildings and larger residential structures as the state moves to develop the regulations. Please keep this in mind as you move towards whatever you're going to do with Northwest Natural Gas. Thank you.
Kathy Gink, Allen's Ward. I go on record to let public stewards and future generations know that I emailed Eugene City Council today, a Swiss article dated July 18th. Based on this info, you would be well advised to avoid future personal liability for yourselves and taxpayers by placing an immediate moratorium in 5G. Let Eugene learn from the negative experience seen in this article, Swiss Magazine reports, "First 5G Injuries in Geneva," by Mark David. Quotes, "Since 5G antenna were installed near Geneva's home, near the Geneva home, these residents suffer from various health problems. Are they victims of attack whose dangers were not sufficiently tested? One person, a doctor and a member of parliament, speak out. What they have in common is insomnia, tinnitus, headaches, and a lot of questions. The older person had a heart issue. He had to go to the emergency room two days later. Johann, 29, is not the type to hate invasive technology. He makes his money off of finely crafted videos and films. Clip, clip. Equally disturbing, when he goes to neighboring France, pains subside. They come back and as soon as he returns to the city, it starts again. Installed rapidly in Switzerland, 5G antennas raise issues of health consequences of electrosmog. Johann says that he gradually is getting used to it. However, he says he will not raise children near an antenna. His neighbor, Eladon, age 50, is not doing any better. He's also in the acting business. He started having the same symptoms more acutely. It happened overnight, he says. My ears started to make very loud sounds, whereas at this time, I didn't even know what tinnitus was. At the same time, he felt pains in the left side and at the back of his skull. In such violent discomfort in his heart that he thought he was having a heart attack and went to the emergency room two days later. The nurse replied that the staff are not trained to provide effects of transmitters. So he has learned to live with his earaches, but they are unbearable." And I also sent you a testimony by master permaculturalist Joshua Smith today, who's worried about the insects. And I know we all love Barbies in Eugene. I'd like to recommend to you this book, Elena Freeland, "Under an Ionized Sky," about the space fence. And maybe you saw the space fence on TV some years ago. And so this is major news. It comes in little pieces, then we find out what's really going to happen with artificial intelligence. Okay, it's going to control all the sensors worldwide as 95% of the world gets radiated with radio frequency and microwaves. And there's a trillion new smart devices sold. Artificial intelligence will be in charge. So you, only you can stop a fourth buyer. Thank you.
Are there councillors who wish to make comments? Councillor Semple? Councillor Clark?
I'm going to bite. Madam Matrine. Couple of questions come to me. Does the council have a legal obligation to implement a precautionary principle as it pertains to any issue particularly?
I have, I have, that is such a broad statement. I don't, I'm not.
As it pertains to this issue specifically? As it pertains to this issue specifically?
Again, it’s such an oversweepy, I’m not comfortable just answering that on the fly right now. I haven’t even.
My understanding of the.
I’d like to do legal research to give legal advice. That is my principle, so I do not want to do that for you on the fly.
Do you understand the essence of my question?
A little bit, but I would like to know more specifically of what you’re asking.
It’s a more common legal principle in Europe than it is here to operate based on the precautionary principle, where here we tend to operate on the proof-of-harm principle. In other words, we allow the largest potential for freedom in our country until such a time as something is proven harmful, and then we tend to regulate based on that. Whereas in more European countries, it’s more common that if something could potentially be harmful, that it be regulated until such a time as it’s proven safe. My question is whether we are under any legal obligation to act under that principle?
And I would want to do legal research and provide you a legal answer.
Second question, are we under any legal obligation to act in the manner discussed in some of the testimony tonight, or is our lack of action putting us in any potential harm as it pertains to the 5G issue as discussed tonight?
There was a lot of comments made during a whole bunch of different people’s testimony, so whether or not somebody can bring a lawsuit against you, lawsuits can always be brought against the city.
Sure, we can be civilly held, but what I’m asking is, are we affirmatively obligated in some manner that we’re not acting in?
Again, generally, okay.
Quiet down.
I’m not comfortable answering really, really abstract legal questions like this.
Right, I completely understand. You’ve heard some of the testimony tonight, this was what I was referring to the other day, much like, and by the way, I’m not an attorney, which is why I asked ours, but very much like a policeman is not legally obligated or a policeman is not liable if a crime is committed against a person because they have no affirmative obligation to keep everyone safe. Their job is to do that, and that’s our goal. And their job is to investigate crimes and capture perpetrators and hold them accountable after the fact, but they don’t have a legal obligation under which they could be sued to prevent all crime. And neither, as I understand it, do we have a legal obligation to prevent all harm. And that’s my response, but again, I’m not an attorney, so that’s why I asked ours.
Shh, shh, shh. This is, you’ve had your public forum.
I’d love it if you want to comment on that at some point, even by memo later. Thank you.
I think we’ve been told that there’s nothing we can do about 5G, and if we could, I think we would, but I was.
Sabrina, I will evict you if you cannot be quiet.
I was impressed by the statements, reminded me of the Declaration of Independence. Thank you.
I would like to just add one thing. The instruction has not been that you cannot do anything about 5G. I want to be clear about that. The specific question around the anti-commandeering principle was explicitly related to adopting a moratorium. That was the very, very specific and limited scope of that question. So when we’re talking about the anti-commandeering and challenging provisions and things like that, that was not what my response was that was provided to you. It was limited to whether or not you could defend the adoption of a moratorium on the basis of the anti-commandeering. So I just want to make sure that it’s clear that this was not as broad as there is nothing you can do, and we’re going to have a work session on that, but that seems important clarification to be made right now.
I’m going to speak first. Okay, thank you for that.
And I also want to address the advocates for moratorium on 5G a couple of points, which is, I do have a meeting with you on Wednesday. It was delayed because I was out of town for three weeks, one of which was at the U.S. Conference of Mayors, where I made a speech about 5G, strongly advocating for fellow mayors to join us in our litigation and objection to the 5G overriding local control of our rights of way. This is a critical issue. It is the fundamental issue that guides everything else. So I agree with you that the health studies have not been done. This is not something that the city of Eugene can undertake or legislate on, but we can legislate and we can call upon the FCC and take them to court, and we are in the process of doing that. So we are taking a strong stand on our local right to control our rights of way. There is income related to the city of Eugene. It’s a very significant issue to us, both in terms of health and in terms of our right to have authority of our rights of way, and we are doing that work. We have taken the telecom industry to court three times successfully, been upheld successfully. We do this work. We know how to do this work. We are not ignoring the dangers, and I have gone on a national stage to say so. So I just want to assure you that I am listening to you, and I will talk to you again on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Michael Clark. Yeah.
Thanks. I don’t mean to put you on the spot, by the way, at all. I just was looking for some general guidance on those thoughts. I also would like to say that not acting in a speed that is hoped for isn’t the same thing as not acting. And I’ve had, since the beginning of this conversation, as it were, I’ve had some pretty broad questions, and I still do, and that’s why I asked that we have a work session finally, and we do have one on the schedule, and that’s our normal process to act. When we have an issue that we want to learn more about before we do something, we schedule a work session, and that’s what we’ve done. So we have taken action, in fact, in our normal process to deal with the question, and we will. I’m looking forward to it.
So this was a rather important city council meeting here in Eugene last night because this was the last of the meetings before the summer recess where they take a break for the month of August. So it’s the last one for about seven weeks or so, and it was also the first one in quite a while, like well over a month, that the mayor actually showed up because apparently she was traveling for a while. And this is one of the reasons that we pressed them so hard to actually respond to our commentary. You know, we’ve been going at this locally for a long time and have had very little response from our city council, so, you know, we did get some response last night. It was a pretty interesting response, and we will be responding to their response in September when we resume. And there’ll be some additional things going on in our 5G opposition that we will continue to report on. In the meantime, there’s going to be a little bit of a break for some time. Visit healthharmonic.com to learn more about what I’m doing on both the healthful and protection from the harmful aspects of these kinds of technologies. I believe that when it comes to electromagnetics, we have two sides of this story, based on the frequency and the coherence in the signal and in the fields that we’re using, and we can use these frequencies for healing work, and we can, you know, as far as telecommunications technology, they can definitely use it for harm as well. Healthharmonic.com, we’ve got products to address both sides of that issue. Check it out, healthharmonic.com, and if you found this video helpful, go ahead and share it with all your friends or whoever you think is going to get something out of it, and go ahead and subscribe to this channel so you can keep up to date on the latest that’s going on. And thank you again for watching this video, and I will see you next time.